Okay, so on capital, if I scroll down to the water utility. We are looking at the leak detection unit for $5,500. We have water tower number two and well number five in here, and then the tenure AMI project. And then for the sewer side, we have the annual lift station pump replacements and then a sewer jetter truck in, is that 2026? And that's partially funded by the stormwater utility. If we look at the debt service for the utilities for water, we have the 2020 bond terming in 2035. And then we did plug in a potential 2024 revenue bond, which would be for the well and the water tower. That would be a 20-year bond. And then on the sewer side, you can see that our annual debt service is greater than $600,000 per year. However, that will be paid off in 2024. So we are expecting that the capital debt fee will be eliminated in 2025.
How much of the well and the tower can be paid for with impact fees?
I don't think that's been determined yet.
Oh.
We have it there, it can be used. I think there was just some discussion with CLA on what percentage of that we should use for that. So I think we're gonna, or just let CLA tell us what they recommend for how we split on that.
I mean, we could use as much as possible, right? Without having to borrow.
Yeah, we intend to use the majority of it. It's just there was some, I think, scheme on her end to not use it all upfront, but save some for other expenses down there.
I like how you looked at them.
Well, paying the debt service, for example. We use the sewer impact fees to pay the CWF debt service currently.
We're definitely not gonna give them back. We're gonna use them.
Yeah, we.
Okay, so looking at the water operating statement, I just want to point out a couple of things here. So again, we did just file for the rate case for the water utility, but you can see that we actually have a projected net loss when including O and M debt service and payment in lieu of taxes. So that's the 40, just under $44,000. And then for projected operating cash, we're looking at about $454,000. However, that is short of where we would like to be. So our benchmark is 12 months operation and maintenance plus the payment in lieu of taxes, which is that $617,000 number. So we're a little bit short there. And then on the sewer operating statement, point out the same things here. We have net operating income of $35,500, projected operating cash of about $1.6 million. And here our desired cash is three months operation and maintenance plus annual debt service. And we do have more than that metric here. I will point out that we transfer operating cash annually to our depreciation fund, about $95,200. A portion of that transfer is required as a condition of the CWF debt, but we also transfer to meet industry metrics as well. And speaking of industry metrics, for financial metrics, for the water utility, things start to look a little more bleak in 2024 and 2025 when we are projecting to go out to borrow for the well and water tower. However, we are not assuming a rate increase. The last rate case took 18 months, so we really, at this point, aren't going to be sure what the rate increase will be or when that rate increase will be effective. And then all of the debt service is currently on the water fund, and we do know that a portion of that will be funded by impact fees. So this is kind of like a worst-case scenario for financial metrics for the water utility. For the sewer utility, everything looks great here except for the debt service coverage. And really, that does not matter because we're going to be paying off the debt in 2024 anyway. And then if we take a look at the water impact fee fund statement, I'm just gonna scroll down to where we project to end 2022, which is a little over $600,000 on hand. Again, we have that water impact fee facility need study that's in progress. We did plug in here using the full $600,000 for capital outlay in 2023 to reduce borrowing. However, the impact fee study will determine how much will go to the well and water tower to reduce the borrowing and to pay some of the debt service. And then the last piece that I'm gonna bring up is just the comparison of the sewer rate increases. I'm gonna go to the historical chart so you can see the increases from 2018 through the proposed 2023. And then for the year-to-year rate increases or increase, I'm just going to scroll to the bottom here and point out that for a customer with their 3/4-inch meter, which is a typical residential customer, the quarterly impact in their bill would be $6.56. So I don't know if there was anything more that you wanted to add, Andy?
No.
Okay. So the Public Works and Utilities Commission unanimously recommended adoption of the budgets, including the sewer rate increase, at their last meeting on November 29th. And we are looking for a motion to approve or not approve Resolutions 22026 and 2022027, the 2023 Water and Sewer Utility Budgets as presented, the 2024 to 2027 budgets as a guide, and the fee schedule as attached.
Can we do all these together, Alex?
I think we have to do them. We can do both of them, two resolutions together?
As crazy as it sounds, you can.
Excellent. I make a motion to approve Resolutions 22026 and 22027, and the 2023 Water and Sewer Utility Budgets as presented, the 2024 through 2027 budgets as a guide, and the fee schedules attached.
Smokes.
Look at that.
Wow, sweet.
Second?
Well.
She can have it.
This is moving along quite well. So we have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 22026, a resolution setting fees for the village services, permits, and property use for 2023, and a motion on the floor approving Resolution 22027, a resolution adopting the 2023 Water and Sewer Utilities Budgets for the Village of Swamaco, Wisconsin. We have a second on the floor for 22026 by Trustee Eckert, and a second on the floor for Resolution 22027. Assuming a second on the floor for 22027 as well?
Well, you just need one second.
It was, sorry, it was one motion, my apologies. So we have the second on the floor from Trustee Eckert for Resolution 22026 and 22027. Is there any further discussion or questions from the board? I believe this is roll call then.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Romez?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Van Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, that was probably just about the neatest piece of business I've ever seen done around here. Very good.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jessica and Andy, for your work getting this finished.
Okay. Next. Moving on, we are on item number nine, Fire Department Items 9A, Resolution 22030, accepting an anonymous donation.
Thank you. We received anonymous donation, looking for board approval to authorize a resolution that the $3,000 be used for fuel cost in 2022.
I normally don't give anonymous anything, any credence.
Wish I knew who they were.
Free money, I do.
Did they say what that was for? I just got a call from Merrill Lynch and that they were, somebody would like to make a donation in amount of $3,000. I asked if they wanted it for any certain thing, they said no, just a contribution to the department. That's probably your most pressing need? That is definitely a pressing need.
That's a very prudent use, and wow, though, how cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Feel free.
Chief, I wanted to pay a compliment when I saw this. I know you fell into this one, but I think you've done a really good job of whether falling into it or searching out every nickel and dime you can find for your department. I appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Takes more than a blind squirrel to find a nut.
That's right. If there's no other discussion, make a motion.
Even a blind squirrel can find a nut.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22030, authorizing the acceptance of $3,000 donation used for fuel cost in 2022.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Trustee Schneider to approve Resolution 2230, accepting an anonymous donation by the Fire Department. We have the second by Trustee Rodden. Is there any other further questions or discussion from the board?
Well, I just want to say whoever you are out there, thank you.
Yes, whoever you are out there, thank you for listening. All right, if there's no other further questions or discussion, this is not a roll call. Let's vote. Ballot's in favor?
We could do a roll call. Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Ward?
Aye.
Trustee Rodden?
Aye.
Trustee Romez?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
President Van Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Item 9B, MOU for siren maintenance with Brown County Emergency Management.
All right, we received a memo, MOU from Brown County Emergency Management. Kind of what it was, I guess, in, nothing was formally written down in the past as far as regarding tornado sirens or emergency sirens with all the municipalities in Brown County. So this MOU kind of clarifies the agreement between Brown County and municipalities. Village Swamaco, I believe, Andy might have a little more background, around 2016, 2017, took over the maintenance and yearly inspection of the sirens. This MOU basically states that Brown County will inspect them only every three years, and you're still responsible for the cost. So looking for, I guess, acceptance or signing of this MOU, knowing that we will still continue to yearly inspect and maintain our sirens.
On the background, it says that we take care of the batteries. On this, it says the county takes care of the batteries and fuses.
So we're looking to kind of work with them a little bit on some of those charges. There is some discrepancies on the timing of batteries, and I know of delay in the past. It would take several months to get that stuff repaired. So we're still going to maintain that and anything that we could get from them as far as charging them or back costs, we would.
So on the thing we're agreeing to, we're agreeing that they pay for the batteries and fuses?
Basically, yeah.
Okay. And is there, is there any risk that we might be getting abandoned at the deal here? Because it was their idea to do this, right?
I think they just want to clarify the inspection, you know, it's gonna be every three months, and then if you're replacing a pole, that municipality would have to cover that. Any other maintenance costs besides batteries, that the municipality would be covering those. And I think it's a good idea that we maintain them yearly. I know we try to rely on technology, but I think it was just last week where half or 3/4 of the people in Brown County got a alert on their phone.
Oh, yeah.
And I didn't get it, I personally didn't get it, but you can't always rely on technology. So that's why I think the more sources of information you can have, especially citizens outside, hearing those sirens is valuable.
Scared the heck out of you, and then said, oh, never mind.
Yeah, they sent that, basically canceled it for the fact that it went out to everybody.
No, 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 this makes perfect sense. I think having Brown County part of it because they're the ones that actually set the alarms off, I think, is important. In fact, you talk about scaring the crap out of someone on the way home from Marquette today. I think it's O'Connell has a siren right next to 41.
Yeah.
And it went off as I'm driving by it.
And you thought it was for you.
No, it was extremely loud. I was rolling inside the road, like, scary, yeah.
So yes, I guess to answer your question, the batteries, we would, we would charge Brown County for that.
So I mean, a lot of this is driven by the liability issue that comes with alarms.
Correct.
Right? We all know that. We saw it happen in out of Gamy County. This clarifies, you know, who's responsible for what. And I'm glad we're still doing our inspections yearly, so.
I'll make a motion that we sign that memorandum of understanding with Brown County and continue with our yearly maintenance program in place as we're still responsible for maintenance costs.
Thank you. We have a motion from Trustee Rodden that we sign the memorandum of understanding with Brown County and continue with the yearly maintenance program in place as we would still be responsible for any maintenance costs. Is there a second?
Second.
I forgot a second from Trustee Andrews. Any further discussion or comment from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 7-0, thank you. We are now, item 10B, 2023 Capital Roadway Reconstruction Bid, Director Smiths.
Thank you. All right, looking for an approval tonight to move forward with the road replacement project here for 2023. Just like every fall, the Public Works and Utility Commission rode our five-year capital road plan. They, we rode all those roads and agreed on for the 2023 schedule. We believe those were the most severe and in need of repair, but there's a pretty good group of them. They all are kind of in one general vicinity, which always helps save a little bit of mobilization cost during the project. So with that being said, we put a five-year plan together. Pretty much, I think you can really account for is next year's plan. After that, it always changes back to here with what roads become worse than they were the year before, available funding. And I know the plan does go, or does add $100,000 each year to the roads beyond next year. And I think there's been some discussions to cap that at a million, so we'll have to revisit this five-year plan and make it reflect having a million for road resurfacing each year. Again, the roads for next year, we put together as a recommendation from staff. Public Works Utility agreed on them. We have most of the engineering work done for that group, and we would be looking to get that group of roads out for bid here in the next couple of weeks. I'm just looking for a motion to approve or deny our staff to bid that out.
And to Andy's point, my intention is through the next strategic planning process, so next spring, we'll hash out this capping at a million or increasing it $100,000. We'll, we'll hash that out as part of the strategic plan process.
Question, Hook Road, is it usually underwater? And is there anybody that lives there?
There is one person, I think, that resides on under the hook.
Okay. But that's, that's probably a water access point, isn't it?
Yep. Well, it's, it's been pretty dry for the last, oh, I bet, three years now. I haven't seen any water, but.
And there's no plan to raise that road?
Right. And actually, on Hook Road, we're only gonna, we're putting like a thin coat overlay on it. We're not even really reconstructing it like we are. We do most all of our other roads. It's getting about one inch of asphalt over the top. We're gonna add some stone to kind of support the shoulders and keep it as cheap as possible, knowing the environment that it lives in out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve bidding out the recommended roads to reconstruct based off of current surface conditions using the attached five-year road reconstruction plan. Yeah, I don't need to read the rest.
No, you're good. Motion on the floor by Trustee Rodden to approve bidding out of the recommended roads to reconstruct based off the current surface condition using the attached five-year road reconstruction plan. Is there a second?
Second.
With alacrity, a second from Trustee Romez. Any further discussion or questions?
Eager.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Well, Mr. Smiths, we can only hope that this goes as smoothly as the last one. Item 10C, on-call pager duties policy, Director Smiths.
All right, we talked about this a couple of months ago, and I thought it'd be a good time to revisit it with the budgets here tonight for the utility, utility departments. We utilize an on-call pager system here for any after-hours or weekend work. I think I kind of explained, you know, last time what the intent of it is, what the responsibilities are. And I kind of put together an operating policy for any and all on-call staff. And I just kind of wanted to elaborate on what I wrote and just clarify it. And we talked about the work vehicle or having a well-equipped vehicle that the staff would take home. That is also in the operating policy. It addresses pay. And I guess one thing I would like to clarify based on what I wrote is rather than at the end having the compensation increased annually by the CPIU, it would just be whatever's approved for increases that year, so that it's consistent.
Or wage.
Wage, yes.
The percentage.
Yes.
Percentage.
Yep, just trying to keep it consistent in that we don't have to revisit this here. We know this, again, hasn't been increased since, I don't even know when, probably like 2010-ish. It hasn't been increased from the $120 that they were paid back then. If we give it an annual increase like our wages, it should be good for a long time.
Is there, is there any, does the cemetery have to be mentioned? I know it's, we're kind of phasing into something. I mean, I'd rather it not go into overtime, but.
Yeah, so what we kind of worked out for the cemetery is if whoever is on-call for that weekend, and it is either a Friday afternoon, Saturday, or Sunday burial, you know, we will have to come in following the closure of the ceremony, and we'll have to cap or put the cap back on that grave, you know, in a timely fashion. So we are gonna try to use communication as best we can and the timing of it all, but, you know, we will have to come back.
And keep costs down, but.
And those costs are paid for by the, from the burial.
Oh, that's true. But, I mean, yeah.
So just the increase in the, in just for the pager pay is in here. You know, anytime that staff responds or comes in, you know, whatever they're responding to, that's where their money is being pulled from or the funding is coming from. You know, whether it's a road issue, a water issue, sewer issue, cemetery, you know, that particular department's paying for that work.
Are there any questions for Director Smiths?
Then again, a big part of the tool, or do we want this as a tool just for any new staff? You know, we hire new staff here, we want to be able to hand them this policy from the very beginning. This is what you're signing up for. And if you don't like it, you know, maybe this job isn't for you. But these are the requirements and compensation that you would get accordingly.
If there's no other.
I'll make a motion to approve adopting the policy into Chapter 6 of the Village Operating Policy Manual, which would become effective January 1st, 2023, relating to on-call pager duty.
Motion on the floor from Trustee Schneider to approve the policy into Chapter 6 of the Village Operating Policy Manual with regard to pagers. Is there a second?
No, second.
And we have a second from Trustee Romez. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are on, made it all the way to item 11, Administrative Items, item A, Potential 2022 Contingency Expenditures, Administrator Kaker.
So there is a saying that nothing good happens after 90 minutes at a board meeting, so I'm gonna tread very carefully through the next several items. First one is the contingency fund discussion. So as you know, throughout the year, between staff or at board meetings, there may be certain expenses that it's asked that it be brought back at a later date, typically in December, for the village board to contemplate using contingency funds. So currently, we're looking at about $45,000 remaining in the balance of our contingency fund. There's a list here, I'll go over them all briefly, or staff will chime in, and then we can kind of just go back to the top and, and work our way through them. So first one is the resurfacing of Calavera Tennis Courts. There's an estimated cost of about $56,000. We are expecting, Nick, I think it's a $6,000 grant to be announced later this week. They ask that we hold on to that information until they make a public announcement on it. So that leaves about $50,000. Now, the contingency fund itself would not be able to fill all of that, so I've laid out a couple of additional options. One would be using stadium tax fund dollars, public works sinking fund, and/or trail development funds. So in theory, you could use a portion of all of those funds. I think the real question for the board tonight is if you'd like to use some contingency fund dollars for that project, how much would you like to use? And we can get back to that one. Next one is the planting of a tree barrier along the Ancestry Acres property. That would go from Velp all the way back to, is that Maggie?
Maggie, yeah.
Maggie, okay. So we currently have an estimated cost from Scenic View of about $2,500. And there is a grant application out there through the American Transmission Company. So if the board would be willing to spend contingency fund dollars on the, in the event that we do not get the grant, that's what's before the board tonight. But if you make that recommendation to use contingency funds for it, and we do get the grant, we just wouldn't use the contingency fund dollars.
When do you think you'll know? Because we, we were talking about that for a bit now.
Yep. They told us that by the end of December, we should have word on that. Next one is the installation of automatic can washers in the village hall public restrooms. This is something that I've been asked of by a couple of staff members. Would it save water? Probably. Would it cost a little bit more in terms of replacing the batteries? Probably. Could it mitigate people getting sick because there's less touch points? Probably. It's not something that I'm willing to stake any flags into, but that has been requested of me, and there would be a not to exceed $2,500 on that project.
Is that because they run so long?
They do run for, I think, 20 seconds, which I think is what you're supposed to be washing your hands for.
They run pretty long.
But if you don't push it all the way, then it only goes for about five, 10 seconds. So then if you push it again, then it's, you know, longer than you need to run it for.
Other than that, is there anything wrong with them?
They work as designed. Next item is the Laserfiche one-time update. And Clerk Bartolotti, I'll let you kind of speak to exactly what that would be for.
Yeah, so Laserfiche, we've had the technology for a while. And the plan itself that we currently have expires at the end of this year. So we would have to do a silver plan. It's $2,950 for a one-time fee. And what that does is it does allow us to get the upgrade free from 10.0 to 11. And then we'd be able to function with that current version. Does have some other amenities. It does cover the cost of two Laserfiche certification classes that Lisa and I would both take, and that way we would educate ourselves on the Laserfiche program. And then there is some other amenities such as the response times and professional service time that we could build some automatic flows, workflows, so.
Is that where you're transferring paper records? Is that?
We'll get to that.
Oh, is that, is that this?
It, this allows us to do that, yes.
What plan gets you the annual empower conference ticket? Because neither of those plans allow that.
None of them.
Okay, next, sorry, Michelle, is that?
That's right, no, that's all I have.
Next one is, we had a resident on Norfield Road reach out, came to a board meeting and requested that some updates be made to the building. Andy was able to get a quote, I think it's from an Amish company. Andy, can you speak to kind of the scope of that project?
Their estimate included just re-siding it and updating the face of that. It kind of has that overhang there on the front. It would, they'd reframe all that in with steel, new fascia, new soffit, make it look pretty. It doesn't address the parking lot, though. It doesn't address really anything outside the building, but it would update that facility that's out there.
We're still using that facility, right?
Uh, yeah.
It's metal, right?
Right now, it's steel, yep.
So you can burn it now?
Well, you could. I think.
You wouldn't get much burn out of it.
Okay.
Timber framed it. I mean, there's plenty of wood that, we could make it burn.
I mean, when we're.
You say that too eagerly, you know that? We can make that burn.
If that's you.
We know, so we're looking at an investment in there of potentially $35,000, that's what's on the map. What's the assessed value of that property?
Zero. Zero.
It's a municipal-owned property, he's just being sassy.
I'm answering the question correctly.
So let me ask. If we refurbish that, and if we plan ahead with these, with this Amish company that says, hey, eventually when we get done with that whole wet land mitigation, you know, could part of that be used for some educational, you know? what is that building going to be? You know, are we going to keep it as a maintenance building for, for the land bank mitigation? You know, because if we're not going to keep that building, I don't want to put the money into it. But if we're going to keep the building, I think, I don't mind the investment because it is a good solid building that we utilize, so.
That's why I asked him what's, if he's using it, because if he's not, then why are we spending thirty-five thousand dollars?
They do use it.
Yep, it's used as storage and, you know, we only have so many indoor facilities right now and we pretty much consume a bit of indoor storage we have. And that is one of them.
I will say, oh, sorry.
Oh, when it's done, I mean, that's like a staging area for the wetland mitigation.
Correct.
So, I mean, we're using it now, but can we just sell it after that fact?
We could. And I will say too, randomly, I've gotten two phone calls in the last week of people looking to purchase that property.
Oh, absolutely.
Perfect, as is.
As is.
Yeah.
But how long, how long would that be then?
Uh, I told them not to expect it to be up for sale until at least the end of twenty twenty-three, potentially even twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
But now you have a building in a residential zoning.
It's not.
It's in a location where you can't put a house in front of it. Potentially, you're going to end up with people wanting to run businesses out of there. Our comprehensive plan does not show that as a business location in the future, so rezoning it to a business classification is going to require modifying that comprehensive plan and.
And we lose access to the direct access.
Oh, we would, we'll keep an easement.
Okay.
And you could be accused of spot zoning. I'm sure the neighbors don't want to see a business go in there.
Right.
So, you know, all that has to be considered before you think about selling it, so.
But couldn't someone do like a gentleman does down on Velp, just have your, in that spot, since it's already existing, couldn't you like just make a workshop out of it?
Your personal storage, your personal area? Yeah, you could. Hopefully, you keep it a few more years past twenty twenty-three and I don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
The other thing is, if you're going to do any work in that parking lot right now, we're going to be moving heavy equipment in and out of there, right? Yeah, it's going to tear it up anyway.
A lot of loads of heavy trucks going across that.
Yeah, it's going to tear it up. But you could remove the parking lot in front of the building and put grass in there.
You could.
If it's not going to be operated as a commercial use, you don't need that, right, for a parking lot, so.
So let me ask you, do you think it's a valuable asset on the north side of our town to be able to have some storage?
I would prefer if it was more centralized.
Okay, so it doesn't provide, so if we spent thirty-five thousand dollars and put a steel building up on this property somewhere, or another property we own?
Or another property. We just, we're running out of space, usable space. There's really no room here for something like that. Really no room at any park either. When you're giving up the building, you're giving up the space.
You're not getting much of a building for thirty-five thousand.
Right, not either.
That is true.
There's just not much it can use that building for either. It's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I mean, it's, it's got to be silent storage, really. I mean, you can't be racing trucks in and out of there.
Yeah, we just park things in there in the wintertime, lawnmowers and other cold storage items.
You know, and, and honestly, hanging onto that property, so the wetland mitigation bank goes through, right? And we start to look at getting that thing done and who knows what that piece of property is going to look like. There may be a value in it. I just, I don't know. I, I kind of tend to agree. I don't know if there's, I'm not sure what the point is at this, to, to be investing thirty-five thousand dollars into.
Yeah, it's premature.
That's, that's what I'm getting at. If we're going to keep, if we're going to plan to keep in the building, okay, then I understand it. But if we're not going to, if our long-term commitment isn't to keep the building, well then why would we? Yeah.
Right, I agree with that. If we're not going to keep it for a long enough period of time.
We should fix it if we're going to keep it.
If you're going to keep it, we should fix it.
To put thirty-five thousand dollars into it doesn't make a lot of sense.
So you got to tell us if, if you want to keep it or not.
Right now?
Right now, you want to keep it.
I, I would be fine as long as there's a, a plan down the road to have another means of storage or another facility, you know, in, in a twenty-year plan. That we'd have additional storage at some point down the road. That makes a little more sense in continuity with where the majority of our facilities are and what we do. It'd make sense to, to sell it, you know, in the future.
You've got a garage at your house.
Yeah.
There you go.
I don't believe the thirty-five thousand would, would add to the resale of it either because someone may buy the property and want to just tear the whole thing down and put up what they want.
Right, that, I mean, depending on how much it is, yeah.
And then you could use that money to build your dream facility, Andy.
Yep, yeah, I'm not saying we should keep it. That was just the lowest quote we got to make it look pretty.
We already have the slab next to the IDOL building that's just waiting for a building to be constructed on it, so.
Why don't we just table that until we figure out what we're going to do with it, rather than?
That's what I'm getting at, is if, if we're not.
Table this until.
So I'll keep going through the list. So the next batch of items were actually already approved for the two thousand twenty-three budget. There was just a request at the budget meeting that we discussed potentially using twenty twenty-two contingency funds for them. And frankly, you're really just shifting where the potential surplus is, either twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, depending on if you use the contingency funds items this year for it. Uh, the one item I do want to particularly talk about is the records room alarm detection. So in talking with Michelle a little bit further about this, I think the, the value would be better served if we hired a limited-term employee to scan all of those documents that we have in the basement versus a, that would be an ongoing annual fee to tell us if there is a pipe burst in the basement. So that'd be the only deviation from this list. Uh, you could certainly use twenty twenty-two contingency funds, uh, but that just means that your surplus now will show up in twenty twenty-three.
So let me ask you this. What if we held all fifty thou, I know that's a lot of money, but some of that money, let's say that temporary employee to get the rest of that stuff done is going to cost us thirty thousand dollars.
No, no, no.
Not even close.
No, it should be, I mean, seventeen fifty, hire a person for fifteen dollars an hour. I mean, you'll get a hundred hours for that. I would hope that in a hundred hours, we can scan everything that we got down there.
A few things, yeah.
And then with that LaserFISH update, hopefully, it'll just automatically start putting those documents into folders that we have set up.
I'm in favor of that. I'm, my biggest thing is getting all those old documents out of that room and getting them protected.
Protected, yeah.
So whatever that, whatever that means, maybe even over, you know, I don't know if any people are looking for jobs in Q-one next year. Can we spend that in Q-one?
Sure.
And still use it for employment of temporary.
So it's in the budget, so that seventeen fifty is in twenty twenty-three's budget. And if for whatever reason, we start going through it and go, oh my gosh, we need two hundred hours, we can always come back and request contingency funds in twenty twenty-three to finish that project. But I can't imagine it would take more than a hundred hours to, to scan all those stuff.
Well, you didn't put one item on here. How, are you still worried about equipment reserve?
Well, the reason why I didn't put anything there is I know any surplus funds would go to E R R.
I mean, if we don't use it, it would go there.
Correct, yep.
So, do we not use it?
Well, that's the question for the board to answer.
That is the question.
I think we get the LaserFISH done.
The person.
Get all of that done.
The person and the LaserFISH.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
If the, if the plant, if our, and my other thing is if our grant doesn't go on those plant, planting of the trees, I think we need to get that done as well.
I think so, too.
I mean, those are the important things. And I think we should resurface all of Calavera Park using trail development funds.
Excuse me?
You could.
You could.
Were you just sick of me agreeing with you or what?
You're just going to borrow more money for that trail on Lineville.
Courts are immediate needs.
As its interest is higher.
What were the things that you said again? Sorry. LaserFISH and alarm system?
Uh-huh, not the alarm system.
No, no, the person.
Records room alarm detection?
So there's no need to make a motion on this, this item because that's already budgeted for in twenty twenty-three. Well, we're really, what I think we're really focusing on is this type, top section.
So, again, I'm in favor of the trees and you'll find that out by?
We should know by the end of December. That's what we're told.
So we can still use contingency funds for that?
If we're, if we are denied the grant, we could use contingency funds for that.
Yeah, I think that definitely. Um, and then, and then you're saying a person for the LaserFISH.
I'm just telling you that instead of in the budget where it talks about having a, a records leak detection system, I'm just going to hire a limited-term employee to start scanning.
Let's do that.
That makes more sense.
You need motions for that?
Not for that one. But for the LaserFISH update?
So, why don't we start with this one? I'll make a motion to direct contingency funds to cover the laser, LaserFISH one-time update of the silver plan of twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Are we going to, so we're going to do nothing with Calavera then tennis courts?
No, I'm just taking that one, one line item.
So we're going to take one motion at a time? Okay.
Sure. It'd just be easier.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from contingency funds for LaserFISH one-time update to the silver plan. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second from Trustee Schneider, the motion from Trustee Rodden. Is there any further questions or discussions on this item? We want to roll call this, then this is the financial item.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romans.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a secondary motion if we do not receive grant funding by the end of the year to provide a twenty-five hundred dollar estimate to plant a tree barrier at Ancestry Acres. Does that work for you?
Yes. So we have a second motion on the floor regarding the planting of tree barriers at Ancestry Acres. The motion by Trustee Rodden to
Second.
And, and a second from Trustee Eckert to approve the expenditure of twenty-five hundred dollars from contingency funds provided we do not receive grant dollars to cover that cost. We have a motion that's been made and a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor? Again, that's left to be a roll call. Sorry, it's financial.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romans.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right.
So hand washers.
Were we still looking at the tennis courts?
I guess tennis courts would be it.
So do we still have enough money in contingency funds to use tennis courts or do we need to supplement with stadium tax dollars?
Well, you'll have to, you would have to supplement at some point. Yeah, so right now you've got about.
Thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents.
So we do have enough for, uh, yes, okay. So then whoever is going to make this motion would be, if you're going to make a motion.
Thirty-nine five, right?
Thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty fifty-nine cents.
And then the balance would have to come from one of the other accounts.
But you're.
You don't, you don't have to use that much in contingency, unless that's the motion you'd like to make.
We do need to remember to include the four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for the general fund portion of the I T items below. Because those funds were assumed to be carried over to next year.
Were they assumed to be contingency?
Oh.
For twenty, for the twenty twenty-three budget. That's the funding source. Is the twenty twenty-two contingency.
I think that's where I was confused. Okay, so we're using contingency funds for that.
Right.
So I need to, and how much is it total, Jessica?
Forty-five hundred.
I think you could just make it, you know, if you're going to make the, if you're looking to approve the Calavera, a denial is a denial, no reason to go into cost. An approval is going to be for the resurfacing of the Calavera tennis courts at an estimated cost of fifty-six thousand three hundred dollars, utilizing contingency funds in the balance from stadium tax fund.
So, yeah, but before we do that, I'll make a motion to approve the I T items listed out of the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two contingency fund. First one is one-time network switch, cybersecurity training and filtering, record room alarm detection. Do we need to do that one?
With the understanding that it's going to be used for.
Record room alarm detection, website migration to swamacowisconsin.gov.
Are we, were, I thought we weren't going to do the alarm detection.
He, with the understanding that he's just going to hire a temp person instead of do that.
Instead of do that, you're going to hire the person? Okay.
To scan, to scan it all.
Okay.
Second.
One moment. Okay, so motion on the floor by Trustee Rodden and a second from Trustee Schneider to approve the following I T items in the twenty twenty-three budget. One, one-time network switch, two, cybersecurity training and filtering, three, records room alarm detection, with the understanding that this will be provided by a limited-time, part-time employee scanning the records. And finally, website mitigation to swamacowisconsin.gov. All those in favor? Uh, sorry, it's, it's a roll call, it's finance.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romans.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alex, a question for you. Public Works Sinking Fund, I know we had a lot of discussion during budget time about that, about just dissolving that.
Yeah.
Could that be Andy's little slush fund to get his building potentially?
Uh, it could be. So it's called Public Works Sinking Fund because that's just what I decided to name it after our engineering fund was closed. In reality, the, the revenue source for that was the chargeouts from our engineer, which
Right.
today, moving forward, would be going into the general fund. So really, what that should probably be called is a general fund sinking fund because those revenues are going to the general fund. They're not going to the public works department.
Okay.
So, but yes, you could use it for the, a building.
But we might be a little premature on that anyway because he's got that building until the end of the.
Right.
And we may get money from the sale.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I would rather keep our stadium tax funds. We've already used a huge chunk of that, in my opinion, for the other tennis courts. And I think we should spread those dollars to other recreational items or other items within this village. That's just one voice. I don't think we should use them again for another tennis court.
And I don't mean to, to jump in or on top of you here, but the decision tonight doesn't necessarily have to be what's going to cover the fifty-six thousand because we can just wait until the bids come back and then you know the dollar amount that you need. The real question for the board right now is how much of contingency funds, if any, do you want to use towards that project? That's the question.
Well, so what do we have?
I would say the remaining portion, thirty-five thousand.
Nope, it's missing that now.
Yeah, the forty-five, you have the forty-five hundred, so it's thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty and fifty-nine cents. Uh, if you get the eight thousand dollars in grant funding, it would leave you with nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jessica, because I'm probably sure.
I have thirty-five thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars.
You could, you could just say the remainder of the.
I mean, I would just say to use the remainder of it.
I'll make a motion to use.
You're trying to take your job? You're trying to take your job?
I'll ma, I'll make a motion to utilize the remaining portion of the twenty twenty-two contingency funds on the resurfacing of Calavera tennis courts.
Second. Excellent. So there's a motion on the floor to use the balance of contingency funds unallocated for the resurfacing of the Calavera tennis courts. And we have a second. It was a motion by Trustee Rodden. We have a second from Trustee Ward. Is there any other further questions or discussion?
Sounds good.
Excellent. A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romans.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
See, Nick, I'm not a naysayer on all your stuff.
I think it'll make it a lot more palatable when it comes time when the actual bids come in.
I told him the football courts look very nice.
Terrific. All right, item number eleven B, Know Your Local Government Series Administrator.
What about the hand washers?
I don't think it's necessary.
Oh, we got, we got to tell them that then. We do it.
Well, no, you must be no motion.
All right.
No motion.
It wasn't included in the motion, so.
All right.
Is that something you wish to go back?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, item number eleven, eleven B, Know Your Local Government Series Administrator Kaker.
All right, so President Van Rossum reached out to me a few months ago requesting some type of program that would better educate our residents on the general operations of the village. Kind of similar to, if you've seen in the news, the Village of Howard does a citizens academy. Asked me to do something maybe with a little more sexier name and I just couldn't find one other than Know Your Local Government Series. So this is all in completely draft form. We could tweak this, accept it as is or do nothing. Uh, but the way I have it laid out right now is four separate sessions. It would take place on the first Monday of each month. Idea there being at the end of. Monday of each month. Idea there being, at the end of each session, they could attend a village board meeting. And speakers would include myself, a trustee, and then our department heads talking about what we do, what our roles are, some of our challenges, how do we overcome them. And nobody is more excited than this than Steve Dunks. So looking for feedback on it. If you guys are interested, definitely would want to know who that trustee would be. I could envision us making this an annual series and maybe y'all could rotate or something to that effect. So, go ahead, what you got?
It's not gonna be me. It doesn't seem necessary.
I second that.
I have had people ask me about something like this. They, they attended the one in Howard and they indicated they learned a lot. And it, as just a concept, I like the concept. Needs to be fettered out, I'm sure. I just, I've had people ask me about it, so it's a positive thing, I think.
What's the dinners part?
The dinners part? Well, we would be, in this draft proposal, we would be meeting here at five o'clock. And if you're gonna have people come at five, you better give them some food. I would love to be able to find a sponsor that would pay for that. Worst-case scenario would be getting food like through festival. I think they come, they have boxed lunches that you could get. Otherwise, any other restaurant, just like we do with our poll workers, we manage to find dinner for people. So ideally find a sponsor for it. Otherwise, there is a budget line. The village board has an operating supplies line item that's typically around $1,500 a year and we barely spend it. It's there for you for training purposes if you ever like to go get some training, but I know that's not typically used, so that is a possibility.
I like the concept. I think, I think it would be attended. And I like the idea of, you know, going to our local establishments to see who wants to support, you know, box lunches or dinners or however they want to do it, so.
It just, is, do you think, do you think most people have time for this?
I have no idea.
Um, I, I just think that, I mean, I have never, even before I was a trustee, if I ever had a question, you can just pick up that phone and pretty much-
You have two Mondays a month that nobody attends.
Yes.
Public Works and Utility, your planning commission, they could come to historical preservation, I got that name right, park and rec, health and safety. If they want to learn stuff, these chairs are empty for all of our meetings.
Exactly. They're not gonna stay after that, too.
If it doesn't go well, you don't have to. How many of you participated in the listening sessions? And sat through them? Were they productive?
Nope.
In the beginning, they were.
So from 2014, those listening sessions?
The point is, the reason that this came up is because Howard was successful with it. And no, we're not Howard. I understand. But I also have been approached by citizens who are interested in this and why not. I mean, I just sat down with a Boy Scout tonight who was very interested and his father did most of the talking, you know, was very interested in, in village government. To me, one of the responsibilities we have is offering different options, trying different things. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But you try a pilot program and you see if it works. And then you, we, as a village, and his administration and his elected officials can't be accused of not trying and providing a different avenue, right? In some cases, the listening session did, I mean, the listening sessions were originally pretty popular. There was a lot of people who would come in. We didn't offer food and food is a magnet. Everybody knows that. But, you know, this is, this is less of a one-on-one. This is a way to learn. This is a way so that we don't have to explain that taxation, property taxes are divided up in four different ways, right? People don't ask those questions. Maybe they would, don't know. It might be a complete flop, but we don't know unless we try.
If you want to learn something, you can seek out your answers without a seminar. Is it gonna cost us anything? You plan to get sponsors?
Well, I hope to get sponsors, but if I don't, we would need to pay for the dinners with operating supplies.
What do you think that'll line, Alex?
Figure, you know, at most $15 a person. So if you get the first 10 to, you know, $150.
Does our staff have time for this?
Well, like I said, in our staff meeting, we work here over 2,000 hours a year. If you can't talk about your position for 10 to 15 minutes, there's an issue there. So I think there shouldn't be a whole lot of prep time for this. Yeah, you put together a short presentation, but we're really just talking about what we do day in and day out.
How long is it for each session?
So if you start at five, I like us to be done by 5:45, 5:50.
And then you're gonna feed them?
No, they'll be fed as we talk.
And try to bribe them to go to a meeting? Okay.
I support giving it a try.
As do I.
Worth a try. It's worth a try.
Give her a shot.
But the big question is, who's gonna be the trustee to speak to the governance model?
The president?
No. Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing it, but I just don't think that, you know, a lot of, the president role on this board is really just, it's like the Johnny Carson just asking the questions sometimes. The real, the important things need to come from, from you guys, right?
But wasn't it your idea?
From the N McMahon.
Yeah, sure, it was my idea, but I don't think that just because it's my idea, I should do it. I think there's plenty of other smart people on this board and they should all have the opportunity.
Let me just say, should not be the newest person.
I don't mind being a part of it. I think, I think, I think it wouldn't even be bad if a couple of us were there and, and we did a little Q and A, just like what we did with the listening sessions. I, if this goes over, like a fart in church, well, then it does. It is what it is. We move on, so.
I'll do it with you.
There you go, see?
I just, the newest person here shouldn't be talking about the governance model of the board.
You know, that actually worked out good. Why did you, as the newest person, why did you get involved?
Yeah. So I think you keep pushing forward, in my opinion. I'm just one voice.
I agree with you. Two voices.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Well, I, I get the sense that there is a general majority that we move forward, so I will start pushing this out.
So what's the next step on it? Fleshing it out? I mean, is there another decision point for the board?
I don't think there is.
Do you have to make a motion? Because I'm clearly against it.
My-
It is a money issue.
Well, my one suggestion, though, on the April 3rd one, that you highlight Steve Dunks as the lead speaker.
No, because he's, he doesn't even want to do it. I mean, it doesn't make sense.
That would be the person, that would be the reason why. Well, I'll make a motion to direct staff to move forward with the Know Your Local Government Series.
I would second that motion.
Because the fourth is, is voting. You don't want that.
It should be April Fool's Day.
Whatever.
So there was a motion, motion on the floor by trustee Schneider to, to keep moving forward with Know Your Local Government Series. And there was a second from trustee Romas. Any other further comments, questions? Trustee Eckert, would you like this roll call? Let's make it a roll call.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Nay.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right. Item 11C, Wetland Mitigation Bank Project Supplement to Master Agreement for Professional Services. Administrator Kaker.
All right, thank you. So as you know, we are into the construction phase of the Wetland Mitigation Bank project. And while Chad is very talented and smart, he needs some help to design the bid specs and inspect the construction progress. He and I have been working with Ayers Associates just to get the ball rolling on that. And I requested that Ayers provided a formal estimate for what they think the cost to do so might be. They came back at just under $50,000. And we could certainly go out to bid for engineering services on a project like this. But based on the fact that, one, we just selected Ayers through a pretty rigorous RFP process as our primary engineering consultant. Two, they would be billing us based on actual hours worked. And three, the fact that Chad has mentioned he has worked for Ayers in the past and would prefer that we use them, which is probably the most important factor for me in deciding who we would use as an engineering consultant for this project. I really don't see much value in conducting an RFP for this particular project segment. I think the only change in outcome would be further delaying the construction timeline. That all being said, it's up to the village board to make that decision, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm generally one to put things out for bid, but in this case, it makes sense. There's those one-offs that, hey, you know what, you, this is a very specialized project. As long as you guys feel comfortable that you can manage it, the engineering portions of it, and Andy feels the same, and obviously the rest of the staff, but, I mean, these guys are the ones that know the engineers. I'm good, so.
I agree. I mean, we, we just had that whole process of having Ayers as our firm, so might as well use it.
I've been against taking farmland offline for eternity ever since the project started, so I'm gonna be against, not because of you guys.
So I'll make a motion to approve the individual project supplement to master agreement of Swamagon Wetland Bank with Ayers Associates as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor from trustee Rodden to approve the individual project supplement to master agreement of Swamagon Wetland Bank with Ayers and Associates. And a second from trustee Schneider. Is there any other further discussion, questions? All right, very well. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
Thanks. Get running on it.
Thank you. Sure.
If you want me to correct you, Ayers Associates, I'm the manager of our engineering services group. Can you agree today?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for trusting us. You've had numerous meetings on this project with Chad for that, like talented guys who worked in the past. If this was approved tonight, we are meeting with him tomorrow at one o'clock again to push these forward as fast as we can. Obviously, it's still a very important project to the village and Alex for all the years of work that Chad has put into this. Thank you for that.
Can you have the meeting now with Chad and get this going now?
Give him a call.
That would be, that wouldn't be fast enough. Call him on the way out the door.
So on behalf of Ayers Associates, we'd like to thank you for working with us. I will leave some calendars on the table here on a date this evening. If you look at, if there's five or six of them, I need more, just ask Alex or me and bring a few more. In July, that page has pictures, aerial pictures of your fire station that we worked with, five vehicles on. Because we did the site design for that, we purchased some of their professional photos and then we put our own in the air and have additional photos in there. So a project that was done here.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you. All right. Item 11D, Resolution 22032, Acceptance of Grant Award from the AAA Auto Club Group Foundation. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So our grant writer applied for a grant through AAA Auto Club Group Foundation for the purchase of an additional speed display sign. So right now, we currently have one. And it'd be nice to have two, primarily for the reason that when we do these speed studies, we typically have to put one facing one direction on the street for a week, and then the next week we put it on the other side of the street. It'd be nice to just do one week of it on both sides. Or we have then the flexibility of doing two different locations at the same time if there's ever a need to. Or if one goes down, you've got to back up. So we were awarded that in the amount of $3,665. And I'm looking for approval of the acceptance of that grant dollars for the project. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22032, a resolution, resolution authorizing the acceptance of $3,665 in a grant funding from ATRF, or ATRF, AAA Auto Club Group Foundation as presented.
Second. Motion on the floor from trustee Rodden to approve Resolution 22032, and a second from trustee Ward approving a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the $3,665 in grant funding from the AAA Auto Club Group Foundation. Is there any further questions or discussion from the board? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. All right. We are on item number 12, Discussion of Future Agenda Items. I can't imagine there are any after tonight's agenda.
I do actually have.
I do have one, too.
So-
Done for the year?
I think this is a very important issue starting to face our community. The drugs in our high school, which are now underneath partial authority of the Village of Swamaco because all of those citations come here. I'm asking in our public health and safety meeting in January for the, for the director, what do you call, what's the officer that's at the school, the liaison, liaison officer to come and present to us? It's been brought up by our DEOs to me of just about how bad it is. I mean, when my kids say you don't go in that bathroom, that bathroom, and that bathroom during the day because there's drug deals going down, you know, I think it's more than just a school issue. I think it's a community issue that a lot of people don't know about. And I think we need to get eyes, even at our board level. So after they give a presentation to us, if it sounds like it's something that the board should just get a rundown, maybe in sequential meetings, bring that forth. And I talked to Mr. Friedert about it briefly today, too, and he's support, supportive of it. So I don't know about the rest of the administration, but those are the important people.
Okay. So the action then is to reach out to-
I will, I'll take care of, I've already talked to our clerk about getting it on our January health and safety. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention for future.
Who else?
I've been contacted by a couple of developers who are requesting that we revisit our plans for developments in regards to having a minimum of a half acre. They said if, if, if that were to be, say, at a quarter acre, there would be numerous development programs or projects in the, in the works. So I'm not sure if that would go down to the committee to look at that, if that's a discussion for us to look at beforehand. But something to the effect of looking at our economic development plan, specifically our requirement for housing development of having a half acre as a minimum for development.
Is that something that would be routed through planning and zoning?
They want half acre?
No, to get rid of the-
Your sewer subdivisions right now are 14,000. That's not anywhere close to half an acre.
No, they're, they're talking about quarter. Going from, because they, they are the understanding that it is a requirement for any kind of development to have a half acre, not necessarily in just a sewer district.
It's not a requirement, though, in the sewer district?
Sewer district is 14,000 square feet. Unsewered is a minimum of 50,000. Some areas are two acre.
Okay.
They want that in rural residential.
That's not possible in rural residential. I think county has a 40,000 square foot.
That's, that's a-
They, like I said, I always- Again, I was approached by it and they, they requested that I bring it forward. So what-
14,000 is just over a quarter.
Okay.
Well, it'd be a planning and zoning commission discussion.
Because they, one of them was looking at the property over on M at the corner there.
M and Northwoods?
Right, right over by me.
Northwoods and Fiville.
The Kaiser property?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Kaiser property.
You could always do a PDD, too, to get around that. But, okay.
And there was another one, he was talking something about north of, on Cardinal, north of, what's it, Moose Creek, yeah.
Well, maybe just a summary review of our lot size, minimum requirements, and why they are the way that they are.
Yeah, that'd be enough.
I think, so would that be in planning and zoning for the board?
Planning and zoning.
And then maybe the purpose, why that came up and why the recommended change, or not, why the recommended review?
And invite them to that meeting.
I will.
There you go.
That would be great. Okay. Anybody else?
I do want to make a note that unless there's something pressing, I intend on not having a meeting for the January 2nd date as Village Hall is closed for the holiday.
And you won't be here next meeting?
I will not be here next meeting.
I'll try to make it.
Okay.
All right. If there's nothing else, then I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. So we have a motion from trustee Schneider to adjourn?
Second.
And a second from trustee Andrews. All right. Any further points? None to be made? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everyone. That was a very full agenda. A lot of work.